Six o'clock, I'm calling the Planning and Zoning Commission special meeting of February twenty, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. May I have the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Malanga Casares?
Here.
Mike Barone. Manolo Rangel?
Here.
John Inaray?
Present.
Yixing Wang. Regina Portillo. Daniela Salafat?
Yes.
Ana Gabriela Villarreal. And Hector Garfias.
Here.
For the record, you have one.
Do we have any commissioners that are here right now late or have called?
Yes, Mr. Portillo called that she's on her way. She actually went to City Hall, which is in its way. Other than that, Mr. Barone, Ana Gabriela had said no, and then Yixing Wang said no, but requested.
Okay. May I have a motion to excuse those commissioners?
I'll make a motion to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This stands for the flag allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of America under the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States of America.
Let's now go to consider the approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the minute.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm going to open the public hearing and go on to item six A, public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance. We have amending the zoning ordinance map of the Cileraredo by authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for amusement services outdoors, events, and our venue on lots nine and ten, block forty-three of the western division located at fifteen nineteen Lata Motto Street.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant and the applicant can table this item.
Okay.
Motion to table.
Motion to table this item, six A. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item sixteen, amending the zoning ordinance map of the Cileraredo by rezoning lot one, block five sixty-nine, western division, located twenty-six nineteen Salinas Avenue from R three, next residential district to B one, limited business district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have applicant Hector Ramos and Maria Del Carmen Gomez owners who have property location lot one, block five sixty-nine, western division, located at twenty-six nineteen Salinas Avenue, who have design change request from R three to B one, who have proposed use for retail store, thrift store, leather scent, or thirty-six, and we have run for and run against. We have the background of the condition use permit. This permit was approved on June eighteenth, twenty twelve, by City Council for a thrift store with an expiration date for five years from date of issuance. The CUP expired on June eighteenth, twenty seventeen, therefore the use is no longer allowed at this location. CUP compliance status on February eighth, twenty twenty-three, an inspection was conducted and revealed the problem. Only three parking spaces were available instead of the five parking spaces as required by the CUP. However, eight spaces are required as per the Laredo Land Development Code. Out of compliance with the landscape ordinance, since only one tree was planted instead of two trees and twelve shrubs as required by the community, and we have no opaque fence installed to the adjacent residential zone. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Featured land view map. And the recommendation is staff does not support the proposed zone change, but staff will support a conditional use permit. And the proposed motion.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of this item may come up now.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Hector Ramos. I'm a retired school of industry employee, and I also served the city under the Cable Commission for four years and the Safety and Traffic and Safety Commission for three years. Now, I bought this property in twenty-ten from the Valencian Brothers. At that time, it was a cleaners and a tuxedo rental place. Now, these people were in business for over forty years, although one of my neighbors, Mr. Ramos, tells me that it was actually fifty years that they had been in operation as a business. Now, I bought it thinking that it... I was... Let me just tell you a little bit about the property there. Although it says twenty-six nineteen Salinas, the Salinas portion of the building is located on the side of my business. My business was on Jefferson Street, which is half a block, and I do have the parking spaces, a lot of them front is parking space, and I have additional parking on the side of the building. Yes, on the front and on the side, all of that is parking right there. And I do have the fence. It's a cedar fence that I constructed from one end of the building all the way to the back of the building where you see those black lico's. Everything separated from the adjoining property there. Now, my business is located, carry corner to an apartment complex, four days apartment complex. One of my businesses, I have a duplex. In fact, one of those duplexes is being used as a truck shop. They make business cards and other banners and what have you. Now, from my business here on Jefferson Street, because the building is located Jefferson, the next block there's an emerging snack shop. Now, it's also business. Now, across Emerging Snap on Jefferson Street, it says there's a seamstress there, and one block away is a glass shop, Cruz Glass Shop. And you know that San Bernardo, or San Bernardo's, you know, business district, and located two blocks on the, also Santa Maria, you know, in Santa Maria, there's also lots of businesses there, including a beauty shop, a tire shop, and warehouses on this side. It is a truck lot. You know, I would want to invest some money in the building to air condition the whole building, to work on the floors and put a new roof, but I do want to operate as a business one zone so that I can invest money and not, depending on the future. So I would please ask you to help the small businesses, help the small business owners by allowing me to operate under the B one zoning. And if there's anything that needs to be corrected, I've had the building like that since it was first approved. I've been operating as an antiques and collectible shop for the past eleven years under a conditional use permit. I haven't had any complaints from the neighbors. I know all my neighbors, you know, I get well along with them, so there was no problems in that aspect, and if anything needs to be corrected, whether it be trees or whatever, there's trees, there's two here in the front, and on the back side, you can see there's a big tree over there, and on the side, we had some others planted next to the fence, so, you know, if anything needs to be corrected, I'm more than happy to do it. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Mr. Ramos, I know planning is not supporting the zone change, however, they are supporting a conditional use permit. Would you be willing to, would you allow you to operate your business under a conditional use permit? What is your standing there?
Yes, I would love to have a business zone to invest, like I said, in the building, but if it's not approved, then I'll just have to continue. You know, some of my neighbors were thinking that I was going to change the building, and I'm just going to continue what I'm doing now. It's an antiques and collectible shop. It is not uncommon to get people from Zapata, from La Peña, from Aviengue. We have people from Alice and San Diego. We have people from Cultura coming in and from the Rio, Eagle Pass area. I consider myself, I consider myself an ambassador to the city. I let them know, these people from the command, I let them know that the restaurants, the historical facilities that we have, and also incidentally, I was a volunteer for Bud Olympics for about seven years. Thank you for your time. If you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Real quick, the question you asked, would you be okay with a conditional use?
I would be okay.
Because you took it to run your business. Everything's still the same. But that's what the city's had.
If I operate under B one, then I could invest more money in the building.
But you risked everything with the conditional use permit.
You know, in the future.
He was doing what he would, what he wants to do with a conditional use permit, conditions, or what he could do as B one business.
Is there more questions from the commission?
Siento que no le queda claro a él qué es lo que está pasando. ¿Le pueden explicar? O sea, cuando se obtiene un permiso de uso condicional, la ciudad te autoriza el B uno, ¿verdad? Y puedes realizar lo que usted quiere como B uno, pero no le pueden hacer el cambio nada más de el R uno, R uno tres, R tres, a B uno. Pero con el permiso condicional le pueden ayudar, ¿verdad? A ser su B uno y podría tener las mismas facilidades que un B uno. ¿Estamos correctos?
Yes. Now, one of the issues that we have...
Pero tiene que continuar con todas las cosas.
There's a lot of requirements, parking requirements, things of that nature. The way the cars are parking now, that's not allowed so they can reverse into the street. They have to parallel park. You know, based on the square footage, there's a certain, there's a formula of... the ordinance or the rules to get open, you know, and that, but this, if you look at the zone, the zoning map, you'll see that everything in this area is R three, and this is the one island in the middle of all that. Although, in his defense, there are businesses that aren't, that never came in for a zone change, you know, which are old businesses that have been there for a long time. So if you were to drive, it's a little deceiving, because when you see the map, you see it R three, but then you go out there and you do see businesses in the area. So to his, he's correcting what he's saying about that. But in zoning, you know, to have that island to allow for the B one for that area, it's a little difficult to do that. We would recommend a conditional use permit and work with the applicant to try to, try to get him to where he can meet the requirements so that he can open up his business. Because we don't necessarily, I don't, I kind of like the thrift store. I mean, I think it's a, it's a good business. We just have to, to work with him to try to, to try to get that property to meet the specs so he can open.
The way it stands right now, he doesn't meet the specs as far as for the parking permits?
Well, he can, I mean, we have to deal with it, because he's going to have to fix it. So yeah, if he's committed to the building and fixing, but yeah, of course, he can open.
Because he's also wanting to do everything correctly, not like all the other businesses that are there, you know, so.
Agreed. So, and that's the reason why it's here, you know, to present to you all the zone case, to take your recommendation. Now, he has the option of a conditional use permit or actually just saying, you know what, I want to go forward with the zone case, you know, and take it to council and take my chances at council. So that's another option that he has. So, you know, if he feels that this, that he would like to, he'd rather go for the B one, because I know that one of the headaches he was talking about was it expired, the conditional use permit expired. He doesn't want to go through that again where it expires, so he'd rather just do the zone change and, you know, not have to worry about it.
That'd be a problematic situation.
But he would have to go to City Council and get the approval after you make a recommendation, because this is just a recommendation, but he didn't go to council, and at council, then he would have to deal with the council to, to request the B one or a conditional use permit.
Thank you. Under the record, let the Commissioner Portillo is now present.
Yes.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor, I'd like to come up? Anybody against who would like to come up? Okay. If there's any other questions for staff or anybody present, what are the wishes of the commission?
So what you have in front of you right now, the action that you have in front of you is the applicant asking for a zone change from an R three to a B one.
I recommend a conditional use, conditional use permit.
That's on the torus, right?
That's...
Yeah, he has to reapply.
He would have to reapply and...
Well, we can vote on his case. If we're going to approve the change.
Right. So that's why I kind of said that, because right now you're just dealing with this.
So I make a motion to deny requests to change from R three to B one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Yo tengo una pregunta. El conditional use permit cada cuando se vence.
The last one, I think he had was five years, but...
Yeah, pero depende del consigio.
Yeah, they could...
Ese era mi, ese era mi, eso es lo que quería saber.
But he had to go forward with the change.
Porque si puede ser el conditional use permit y a lo mejor de que como él es el mismo dueño hace más de siete, ocho años, ¿verdad? Lo que he oído en las otras juntas, que cuando, cuando cambian de dueño o cuando cambian de arrendatario es cuando se expira el, el conditional use permit. Entonces, si, si va a tener que hacer este proceso cada cinco años, pues no, ¿verdad? Pero si, si se puede ampliar ese, ese permiso para que él tenga peace of mind, ¿verdad? De que está acorde con la ciudad, pues se puede hacer. Oh, no. No sabe.
Point of order, I think you had the motion the second, then you were actually voting.
Sorry.
Could you say?
We have a motion on the table for denying the zone change from B one to an R three. All those in favor of denying, recommending the denial of the zone change.
Aye.
Todos.
Then, motion carries.
So we'll, we'll reach out to Mr. Ramos to buy his office, and we'll try to strategize with the CUP.
So we can make a work for him.
So you could stand there and make it work for him, so he won't have to do this procedure every five years.
Absolutely. We'll keep that in mind.
Real quick question. When the recommendation, that's I said, the motion to deny it, but then we were supporting a conditional use. I go to the council saying, you know what, they denied it, but they're likely all to work with a conditional use permit, so they know that the board here was with that, instead of just saying no in the text.
Yeah, no, no, we can do that. And typically, what we do is we will put the comments that we would suggest if they decide to go with conditional use permit, we have our conditions already there so that, you know, they would know, and we communicate that to the owner, so he knows in advance what the conditions are, and that way, if they do ask him, will you do a conditional use permit, he'll, you know, he could say, I agree.
It wasn't noted, so he does have to apply for the conditional use.
Yes, he's going to have to come and apply for the conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We're now moving on to item six B. Master plan. Item seven A, review and consideration of the coves at Winfield master plan, the tent is residential, commercial, and institutional.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Charco Land Sales, engineer is Mesquite Engineering, and the proposed use is residential, commercial, and institutional. The zoning for this one thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight lot development is all one, single-family residential, and a portion is located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Location view. Area view. The proposed master plan. Comments from traffic safety. Parks amnesia, and comments from fire. This comment from fire was not included in the packet, but it's being presented here in the meeting. And the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Can you go back to the comment? Yes, please.
Good evening, members of the commission, commissioner. We would like to table this item. Miss Martinis, for the record, Representative Charco Land Sales, we'd like to table this item to address other comments.
Okay. Can I like to table, you have a...
Motion to table.
Motion to...
Second, Commissioner.
From Portillo.
Commissioner Portillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion carries. Now moving on to consideration of following preliminary flats and preliminary replats. Item eight A, preliminary consideration of flat of the coves at Winfield Phase four B, the tent is residential.
Mr. For the record, the applicant is Charco Land Sales, engineer is Mesquite Engineering. Proposed use is residential. The zoning for this ninety-six lot development is all one, single-family residential district. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plat. Staff comments, planning, and traffic safety. And fire as the same. These comments were not included in the packet, but they were presented in representation. And the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission, Commissioner, Miss Martinis, Charco Land Sales, one more time. We received the fire comments about two or three hours ago, so we were ready, we got approval, recommended approval. Now, the comments that we received from fire, we feel that we may be able to address them with fire, and we spoke with Captain Gaudy, and we are trying to get a meeting scheduled Friday to be able to address this comment. The comment is kind of strange into our location. We've seen that in other areas within Laredo, this comment is not being enforced as far as the distance between the diagonal and things like that and the access. So we want to apply for variance or discuss with the fire department prior to, but other than this comment, we were agreeing to the rest of the comments as far as from planning and traffic. We would like to move forward with approval if possible, barring this comment from the So I don't know the plan, what the plan is recommending now based on the comment.
Do we know?
I'm just trying to formulate the motion, how it's, I would say, but I think it'd be motion to approve subject to approval from fire.
From fire. Okay.
Okay. Will that suffice?
Yeah, that's okay. I think we'll be able to get around this.
Motion to approve, subject...
Motion to be subject to the approval from fire.
And the comments that are made here.
Correct. You're approving those comments.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Sartabat. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Portillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Thank you.
Just a quick observation. Can we get in the front of our tablet, they have an update, because I mentioned that a lot of these are no comments fire, no comments fire, that's all we see, but there is, there is comments, but we're not, they're turning them blind, whatever, but just that we have that in front of us, because I can't take them here to there, so I want to be able to read them. So just a quick sheet of things, this is changing the book.
Plenty of deadlines or something.
The only thing I can say about that one is I think our system was down last week, and we might have missed some emails, but other than that, we should have it there.
You should, because the last two days, all I read is no comments from fire, no comments from fire, but you hear that the hardest thing to get is the fire.
Ignite, guys.
They're just protecting us, they're just protecting us.
Yeah, we're moving on to item eight B. Preliminary consideration of the plot of the coves at Winfield Phase seven C, the tent is residential.
Okay. Move it. Say, do we want to table this one as well?
Just, just to give you the record.
Good evening, members of the commission, commissioner, Miss Martinis, for the record, Representative Charco Land Sales, and we want to table this as well to address the comments.
Okay.
Have motion to table.
Have a...
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight C, preliminary consideration of the plot, lot six A, block fourteen eighteen Eastern Division, the tent is residential.
For the record, the applicant is really, as in, as in, Alamos, engineers Armando Guerra from Premier Engineering. The proposed use is residential. The zoning for this one lot development is all one, next use residential district. R three, excuse me. The location view. The proposed plat. Staff comments, planning. And the proposed motion.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, good evening. Sir Ken Arvai is with Premier Engineering, for the record, and we concur with their comments from the staff, and we're here, if you have any questions.
Any questions for the evening?
No.
Yeah. What's the motion of the commission?
Motion to approve.
To table. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to consideration of final, following final flats and final replats. Can I hear a motion to hear items nine A? If there's no objection, to hear items nine A, B, C, and D.
I make a motion to approve items A, B, C, and D.
To hear, to hear.
To hear. A, B, C, and D.
Second. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for interrupting. We did receive a comment earlier from the PAC staff, and because of the way the meeting is being transmitted, it would be best if the items could be read into the record. We'd be more than happy to do it, either the staff or whatever you'd like.
Okay, we can do that. So we'll do it individually then?
Just read them. If we do them all together, just read them into the record. So we can do that, or you can do that, whatever you'd like.
You'd like to do that, we can do that.
So basically, we just read it, and it has been approved. The next one, it has been approved.
Nine A is final consideration of the pinnacle of them fourteen seventy-two, billboard number four plat. Nine B is final consideration of pinnacle of them fourteen seventy-two, billboard number six plat. Nine C is final consideration, consideration of the plat of J and H Commercial Park subdivision phase one. Nine D is final consideration of the replat of lot one, lot two, and lot three, block one, Escondido subdivision unit three, into Alta Vista subdivision.
All have been approved.
And all have been approved.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so we did have the motion to just adhere, so now we have the motion, we have the motion to approve.
Oh, you had not read all that? Okay.
So I have a motion.
Motion to approve nine A, B, C, and D.
Yes.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries for those following items, A, B, C, and D of section nine. We're now also going to consideration of an extension of following final plat and final replats. We can hear also all together, correct? Can I have a motion to hear items ten A, which is consideration and extension of final plat approval of the plat of Ciliculindo, farm phase fourteen, the tent is commercial, and consideration of an extension to the final approval of the plat of Ciliculindo, farm subdivision, phase ten A, the tent is commercial.
Motion security, diamonds.
Second. Second from Commissioner Garcia. All in, in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Now may I have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval, item, okay, ten A and ten B.
Second. Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Want to read it for the record?
Mr. Chairman, I'm right on the track of the record.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Tickle away her...
She was happy to give it out. She was happy.
Before we adjourn, do we have any time to our comments?
Well, no, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would say is we don't have anything on the agenda, other than we went to Austin, we were able to secure, we feel a real positive response from Tech Stop was that the Charo Wizinger Road is their priority number one for the state, and so it was very positive to get the money that was short. So at the next commission meeting, they're putting that on the agenda so that we can get that approved, so that's, that's good news. And... for the state, and so it was very positive to get the money that was short. So at the next commission meeting, they're putting that on the agenda so that we can get that approved. So that's, that's good news. And, and, I mean, we went to different places, the department, the planning department, we visited with the economic development commissioner, executive director. We visited with the historic commission. And of course, we, we met with Richard Raymond. Both there in, at Pusso Rayo. And in the near future, we're getting ready to do the same thing in Washington. But the best news of the whole thing was that we did, we didn't have any trouble explaining our need for the money, and they were already on board, and so that... It's on our radar, and we need to put the money there. So we're talking about ninety million.
Eighty million, ninety million. Eighty, ninety?
Ninety. Is that what ended up being? So that was, that was a good trip for all of us. So if anything, you know, we were able to come back with, with that, so, and that would be it.
Thank you. Commissioner Portillo, second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Salafas. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.